Good morning. It's ten o'clock. That's the time that was noticed and posted for the Board of Supervisors work session. It's Thursday, March the seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and it's ten o'clock A.M. We're in the Board of Supervisors hearing room. Melody Lane Bisbee. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion, and we begin with the roll call. District one.
Crosby.
District two, Supervisor English is present. District three.
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling six oh two six oh nine seven five one three, or eight 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 six eight zero six seven one four. Conference ID one nine six one two zero nine nine eight eight pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero four three two nine two zero zero four direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. Introductions and work sessions are always at the beginning of your conversation to us. You need to say who you are and who you're representing so that we will have a complete digital record. So today, we're going to be discussing Miracle Valley Bible College, and I'm going to turn it over to Dan Coxworth, Director of Development Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board, for this opportunity to give you an update about what's going on with the Miracle Valley Bible College. It's been almost two years now in March, you know, of two thousand and twenty-two. It was deeded to the state of Arizona because the taxes were not paid on the property. So a lot of property in the county does get due to the state under the care of the Board of Supervisors. Development Services is involved in the auction process. We look at properties that potentially have either illegal dumping or hazardous materials. And those properties, we evaluate to determine whether we should expend government resources to clean up those properties in order for them to be successfully auctioned during the auction, and also not to pass on a problem piece of property to someone else for them to clean up. Miracle Valley is Bible College is a little bit different in that it's much larger, does have a history here in Cochise County. So since March of two thousand and twenty-two, we have been doing a lot of things on the property to clean it up and to prepare it for the auction. The map on the screen, I'll just go over what we've done to date. The first thing we did was start in the southern piece of property near the auto service building. There was a lot of debris in this area, mostly from this. There was a building here, and when it collapsed, or all of the debris was basically just put here. It wasn't disposed of properly. So the first thing we did was remove all of this debris and take these structures down. There are some fuel tanks still in this area. With the help of some of Jackie's staff, we did locate those fuel tanks. And the next step is to contract with a company who's licensed to remove those, have those tanks registered with the state. And as they're removing them, they do test the soils to ensure there wasn't a lot of soil contamination. If there is soil contamination, then they have to treat that. We have not begun the process of contracting to clean it up. The first step was to just locate those tanks, and we've done that. This area of the property, the Yale Concrete Foundation and the old fire department station is in pretty good shape, except for there's a lot of just dumping and trash in the area that we'd like to get cleaned up. The boys' and girls' dorm, I should mention, we did do a survey of the property for hazardous material, and there was quite a bit of asbestos because this was constructed in the nineteen fifty's and nineteen sixty's. We have since contracted and cleaned up all of the asbestos that's greater than one percent, which allows us or a future property owner to dispose of the material in the local landfill. Now, if they were to remodel any of the buildings with material of less than one hundred percent, excuse me, less than one percent asbestos, there is a standard that you have to have licensed professionals to handle that asbestos. But we have removed all of the asbestos on the property that is greater than one percent. The boys' dorm is in really rough shape. It doesn't have a roof anymore because of the asbestos there, and there, this is the building where there was a fire. So it was significantly damaged, and getting to that asbestos wasn't safe. So they had to remove the roof of that building, all of the, all of the trash that was inside of the building is now outside of the building. The girls' dorm is a similar situation. They didn't have the fire damage, but significant damage over the years and just, you know, decreasing in the ability really to remodel that building or to do something with it in the future. It's not in much better shape than the boys' dorm. The rest of the buildings in this part of the property are in pretty good shape. The church building is missing part of its roof, and is a large structure. Would it meet current code? And then we have the shower and laundry building here, which is cracked, doesn't have a roof on it. So I asked Supervisor Crosby if he'd be willing to meet me on the property to take a look at the property to see what potential next steps could be prior to the auction. Supervisor Crosby and I went and looked at most of these buildings, and as a result of that, I requested from Supervisor Crosby some of his discretionary funds to further clean up the property and prepare this for auction. The buildings that I believe that we should consider removing from the property, other boys' and girls' dorm, the church building excluding the dome, and then this small shower laundry building here.
What is the tab building?
The tab.
Abernwick?
Is that what it is?
Yes, I imagine.
Oh, there's the church building here. We used to call it tab.
Right next to it.
Oh, that is a, used to be a kitchen. And at one time, maybe twenty years, fifteen years ago, they used it for fish, fish fries and things like that. It's in pretty good shape, actually. It doesn't look great, and it's most of the kitchen material or the kitchen appliances have been taken out of there. There is significant debris in most of these buildings, just accumulation of trash over the years. We'll leave those in place, but anything outside of the building, there's significant trash here and along here, and then outside of these buildings. We would also like to clean that up to the extent possible in an effort to prepare this property for auction. So the new owner of this property, when they do purchase it, can focus the capital that they have on improving other structures on this building in the hopes that it will be brought to the highest and best use. So.
Well, did the trash come from outside, or where did all this buildup of trash come from?
Uh, I assume the previous owners. I think there was a lot of donations of things people didn't want anymore.
They had donations.
And they just over, and you know, a building without a roof on it, these, some of these things aren't just going to last very long. But a lot of things have been removed from the property by the previous owner. We allowed him to do that, but there's still a lot left. So what I'm requesting today is support of Supervisor Crosby's request to allocate his discretionary funds to continue the cleanup of the property, and if possible, to have this place on your Tuesday, March twelfth agenda.
Wow, that sure sounds like a worthy cause, Tom. You know, I, I applaud you for thinking of that because I, I really have never wanted to pass this on as a problem to the next owner. And we got a lot of pushback from the people who were wanting it, us not to clean it up and et cetera. And that really felt wrong to me, you know, for us to have a property that we were selling and knowing what poor condition it was in. Now, I know the law was behind us, and we could do that, but that didn't set well with me. So I, I wholeheartedly support this. Ms. Judd, do you have any comments?
Yes, I believe that, that cleaning up the property the way it's being described now I would actually be beneficial to anyone. I still would hesitate to tear down buildings and haul them off, even if they're in kind of poor condition, but having everything cleaned up inside and outside them gives them a realistic opportunity to, no matter who purchases it in the future, to do the reconstruction and the upgrades that need to be done. So that would be my suggestion. So thank you, Mr. Crosby. That's wonderful to contribute to that.
I, I don't know that I would agree with you that we don't need to tear anything down because if it doesn't have a roof on it and it is in poor condition, I think that decision needs to be made by who's on site and, and what needs to be done instead of us saying you can't tear any building down, you know.
Well, I'm, I, one of my jobs is to go in and, and well, draw homes, but then I've also gone into homes that were very derelict, that people were trying to reconstruct, and one of the things that they would have had to redo would have been the roof. And, and a lot of times there was a lot of degradation in, in the interior, and I, and people still saw the value in that. So, you know, it depends on a lot of things. If we needed an engineer to maybe look at it and say, this is just never going to be able to rebuild. So we have that kind of, kind of verification. But that, that's where I'm coming from, having not actually seen the property. I can't say. I do realize the bath house was something we've discussed before. I'm not against taking the laundry in the bath house out, so.
We'll have some introductory remarks, Madam Chair.
Certainly.
It goes like this. I'm not adamant about using the community development funds. It seemed like a reasonable idea from Mr. Coxworth, and so we're going to take a look at it. I'm pleased to have the input from my colleagues today. This is not a business venture by the county and is not an enterprise fund. We don't expect to be making money on this, unfortunately. But I will say, it is however inspirational it might look from the road, unfortunately, it does not look that inspirational when you get up close to it, and much, actually looks much worse upon closer inspection. And if you haven't seen what disintegrated, rotting particle board looks like that used to be the roof, I would describe it as similar to a product of a dairy farm besides milk. And it looks like several herds of cattle went through the building, and in fact, cattle grazed on the property fairly recently. And as Mr. Coxworth has also indicated, and we'll talk a little bit more about this when we look at the, the map and so on, some buildings are okay. So, so originally, I, I wanted to avoid the cost of cleaning it up, avoid the cost of the asbestos abatement in hopes of keeping the costs down for potential bidders. And as we know, we unfortunately didn't get any, any good bids or no legitimate bids. So what, what I'd like to talk about a little bit while we're all here is some other issues having to do with things like the potential bidding process, and I had some questions that perhaps Mr. Coxworth could address. Could you tell us about septic tanks and would, does a septic, does the state want septic tanks filled in? And does the state want the, the fuel tanks removed?
The state doesn't necessarily want anything for this property. The, the septic tanks should be collapsed by the new owner. I'm not sure where the location of those septic tanks are on the property. Removal of the fuel tanks is important because the soil potentially could be contaminated. And again, that's just an effort to provide a relatively clean piece of property to a new property owner. ADEQ does have some resources available, but they're very competitive. And in my discussions with ADEQ, didn't think this property would necessarily qualify because the tanks were not registered. So does the state want us to do anything? No. Would they like? Is it in the best interest of the property to clean up, to remove the fuel tanks and test the soils and have those soils cleaned? Yes. They would like us for, like for us to do that.
Okay, so we're, we're entering, if we're talking about roughly a sum of seventy thousand dollars, we, we don't really know how far that's going to go to, to the cleanup efforts.
Correct. The discretionary funds that, if approved by the board, would go towards the removal of the dilapidated structures.
Okay.
And then as we approach a new fiscal year,
Okay.
we can look at what needs to happen to those fuel tanks. My expectation is it's not going to cost that much because they were small, and they haven't been used in quite some time. And when we found them, we didn't smell gas and the tanks were empty. But we still have to go through a process of hiring a licensed contractor to do that and to have a licensed professional test that soil and re-clean the soil or remove the soil as necessary.
Madam Chair, Mr. Coxworth, I need to ask you a question. So have we, have we got any idea who's going to purchase this property? And have we decided that the people that are the religious group that wants to preserve this, do we have any idea that they will not be successful in purchasing the property?
I, I don't think we probably should be discussing that, and, and we don't normally have people that contact us and say they're interested in buying this piece of property. So just to keep it on what we're talking about today, Ms. Judd, I don't, I don't think we should discuss that.
I have some comments, not, not specific to religious groups or not religious groups, but of concern that we, that we found out during the last bidding process. So we talked a little bit, I believe, as a board about whatever we want to call earnest money or whatever you want to call it, that would lead to accompany a bid. I, I have a couple amounts here, but if, if somebody thinks that there ought to be a certain amount of earnest money offered with a bid to prevent phony bids that one would not get back if they were discovered to have a phony bid, but they would get back if they were outbid by a real bid.
So, so are you suggesting that maybe the, the seventy thousand dollars that we know we're looking to spend would be put on this particular property as earnest money?
No, that's not what I had in mind. The seventy thousand would be, would be there to clean.
I was trying to tie it to this piece of property, since that's what we're discussing today.
I, I don't know exactly what Madam Judd was talking about. What I'm talking about is avoiding phony bids. And so the way to avoid phony, if, if we would have had something in place last fall to avoid phony bids, maybe we wouldn't have had phony bids, but we won't avoid that. So we're thinking some amount of earnest money. And so what would my colleagues think might be an appropriate amount of earnest money, I wonder?
I, I don't have a clue. I, I don't know that we've ever really discussed that. I, I, maybe the attorney could tell us if we can put that on all of our properties or, or specific properties.
And I, I think when we move forward on, on this and we get to that point, we can talk about the parameters of what can be in this auction. We, we spoke about it before, and we're not there at that stage or this stage right now. I think we're going to have a follow-up work session once we get the property ripe before to go to bid. And we can talk about certain things that we can add in there as in providing earnest money so that we do have people that have some stake in the game. You can also lower down the minimum bids or the, or the starting bids so that you can get more interest and more people bidding the process. So there, there are several different things we can discuss. I just don't think we're at that stage right now. I think, as Mr. Coxworth mentioned, you know, we're at the stage of trying to get the property ready for that. I think we're still a little wings out from that.
But, but. Good ideas though.
Yeah, tho- those are good suggestions. I, I think, I think once we get to that point, we can clarify them and, and bring up certain points that get the board's viewpoint on how to proceed on them.
Well, I think I wrote down in my notes what is accurate to say, which is a bidder does get it back if they are outbid by a real bid. And, and if you win, then you get whatever you put down as your earnest money toward your purchase, just like any other kind of a real estate transaction.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
That is correct, and, and the reason why is so the situation that we had last time in the bids of people making those bids but not being able to provide the actual money. So you're exactly right. The process will work just like that. It would work to someone's detriment if they provided whatever dollar amount we suggest, and then they can't come up to the full value, then they forfeit that money.
Well, one thing that Tom is recognizing, and maybe the public doesn't necessarily recognize, is the fact that, you know, there was significant time, and time is money, that the county spent, you know, for this particular piece of property, trying to manage to, to get it, you know, out there, trying to listen to what the public was saying, and we lost a lot of money and time. And we're still not in a position of feeling like that we can offer the property right now. So I, I think that with, with Tom's generous offer, if he decides to do that, that certainly would put us in a much better position and allow us to put more parameters on this property when we decide to put it out for sale.
Points are well taken. I just scribbled down, we're not in a rush.
No.
But time doesn't stand still either.
Right.
And as time goes by, the decaying will continue. So let's see here. Whether it is purchased by a religious group or not, or a nonprofit group or not, will it produce taxes if it is a, if it is purchased by a nonprofit of any kind?
Supervisor Crosby, I couldn't answer that. I, I think I know the answer. If it's used as a religious institution, they don't pay taxes. There won't, wouldn't be any taxes on the property, but I'm not the person really to, I'm not the tax man, so I can't answer that.
Uh, I figured if, if I didn't bring it up, somebody would sometime. Well, if you, if you're going to recoup this, it's going to take like two hundred and ninety years or something like that to recoup it in taxes. But, but like I said, we're not, this isn't a business venture for the county. So some persons are interested in a more thorough inspection. And I think that when, when you and I went out there and, and walked around, one of the ish, one of the points of cleaning it up is to make it safer for people to walk around it without having to trip over all kinds of junk and so on. Any comments on that?
Yes, Supervisor Crosby, the intention is once we do have the property cleaned up and we feel it's safe, we plan on having a number of open houses prior to the auction so potential bidders understand what they're bidding on. Just like as if you were buying a house, you would want to see that house before you purchase it.
Okay, uh, one thing, how about, we, we talked about whether we should have public bids or secret bids. And it, it was my understanding that those bidding on the property that I heard from wanted open bids. They wanted to be able to see what other people are, are bidding on it. We don't, we, we don't have to make this determination. We're going to have this, thus and such work it like this, and, and we can take more public input. How should this work to, to where it's the very best for everybody involved? Presumably, to, again, to keep costs down, it was, it was presumed that those bidding would want to see what other bids were so they didn't bid twice as much as the high bid when they only had to bid five percent more than, than, than the high bid. So that was, that was my thought in, in wanting the open bids or the, or the public bids. So see, so everybody could see each other's bids. So I would be glad to hear from my colleagues what they think of secret bids as opposed to public bids, and what is the, the, what is the typical scenario for any of the properties that, that are auctioned by the county?
I, I don't know particularly about all the bids, all the properties that are auctioned. I know at one point in time, we did it in this room. And because I remember being the auctioneer, and, and so that is a public process. And people were on the phone and also in the room, you know, making bids. At some point in time, a few years ago, the county decided that they would go to a firm, you know, online because it wa, it seemed at that time that it would save time or money or whatever. And so that process stopped. So I think we could always look at that. And if we wanted to do that on particular properties, we could look at it for particular properties to have one kind of process and another. So I think those are decisions that we can make in the future if you're interested in looking at that.
Right, I, I would, and it just initially, my thought would be simulate a real auction, just like what you're talking about. Is that the best thing? I don't know if it's the best thing. That's, that's why we're talking about it, not to make that decision right the second either. So let's see.
Well, I could see that there were people in the room when we did have the public auctions that bid against each other. And so if you're looking at that as being a carrot, it is sometimes because they go, well, is he going to bid twenty dollars more or fifty dollars more? Then I'll go a hundred. You see what I'm saying? So there are people who thrive on auctions. They like the process. They like to be involved in it. And so there's an upside and a downside to that. So, you know, with many of the properties that we offer, there isn't that bidding process, you know, there's, there's a limited amount of, of, of money and time that those people are willing to spend, and they're willing to do it online. There are a few people that might want to have a public auction on something that was unique, so we can certainly look at that.
And, and regarding the, the previous auction, the way that it was set up was that the, the bidders were anonymous, but you can see the bid amounts. So I, the process, I think, was relatively successful. It just wasn't successful in the fact that the bidders had the actual money to pay for the winning bid. So I think to Supervisor Crosby, your suggestions of providing a deposit or, or some form of money to be part of the process could alleviate that. But I think overall, and we do have different processes depending on different property, this being a large property.
Unique.
Unique. There's a lot of interest into, in this property that I think having a similar setup, but also creating certain parameters to hopefully have a winning bidder that has the funds.
I agree with that. One, I just scribbled down here, if, if, if people, even at a real auction, if, if people, if the public comes in and they're, they know among themselves that they are going to pool their money, then, then that would tend to keep the, the price perhaps more artificially low than it might be otherwise. So for, for everything that you think, oh, this is a good idea, somebody's going to come along, and they're going to have some other idea to, to try to beat the system. So as long as that, that's why we got to, I think, put a little thought into what's, what's the best way to do this? You know, accomplish the, accomplish the mission by, to, to put it in somebody, into owner's hands and still make it fair for everybody and so on and so forth. So I'm not trying to lay down how it's going to be. I'm just, I'm just discussing things that, that need to be worked out, handled up. Okay, so let's see. We talked a little bit about things like septic tanks and sewer systems. And you mentioned that that has nothing to do with a property that we have in question, or would you care to rephrase that for your own?
There has been some questions about the lagoon that used to serve this property, but that lagoon is still under private ownership. It is not part of this property or not, and not part of, will not be part of the auction, and is separated from this property by another landowner, a rancher in the area. The property, when it was, I'm not sure when the lagoon was abandoned, but the previous owner who lived in the pub building had a septic tank for that building, which is probably still in pretty good shape. The other buildings, I can't speak to.
Okay.
I don't remember seeing functional bathrooms or fixtures in those, so more than likely those septic tanks, if there are septic tanks.
Decommissioned.
They, they have been decommissioned, but I'm not even sure if there are septic tanks. So it's, I did speak with the health department when we acquired the property about the septic tanks and what they would like to see going forward, and they didn't have any concerns except that if they are abandoned, they should be abandoned and collapsed properly.
Okay, so as a caveat to a potential bidder, they'd have to know septic tanks are as best as we could figure, or this, that, and the other. Or, or we don't know what they are, you know, whatever, whatever it is, just to make it to fair and. Or, or we don't know what they are, you know, whatever, whatever it is, just to make it to fair and for everybody. How about propane tanks that are on the property, are you aware of propane tanks and mitigation that needs to be done?
I am not aware of any propane tanks on the property, there are some overhead electrical lines, most of it had been abandoned. There is a well on the property that is still active.
Okay, I believe that concludes my comments and questions.
Well, I think we've gotten a, a pretty good idea of. What kind of, of cleanup could take place within the parameters of whatever money is set aside for that, so. I guess the, the next step. For the board will be if you wish to put this on the agenda in the future. Supervisor Crosby, in order for us to address it in a public forum.
Absolutely, we can do that and probably the, the, as an agenda item, it would be use the money. From, from. My, what is it, community?
Community development, yeah. Right, so.
And then we could take all the public comment that, that people want to issue at that time, that'd be fine with me, whether it's a special meeting or just part of the regular agenda.
On, on the twelfth, so. And I know Mr. Coxworth has mentioned it. It'll be an agenda item, it could be an agenda item for March of well.
Okay.
At ten AM.
Well, I know when I've filled out the forms, I don't ever know when it'll be on the agenda, I just know it'll be on the agenda, so.
Have been filled out, we just needed to have this work section. To the public that we can.
Thanks again, Tom, for looking at this as a possibility, because I think that certainly moves the county forward.
Thank you, Mr. Coxworth, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, if there's nothing further to discuss before we adjourn, I'll say the next meeting will be Tuesday, March the twelfth at ten AM. In the Board of Supervisors hearing room for a regular Board of Supervisors meeting. Now we can adjourn, thank you all.